Our only significant open item is our metal crown molding in the courtrooms being produced. I had a notice that that was received day of fabrication as it began. RFPs, our flooring and acoustical ceilings, we received two proposals from, one from Walker Interiors and one from Wallace Tile, and BCM recommends moving forward with pricing from Walker Interiors.
Yeah. Now, that, so that's going to come in the form of a change order on that, on the bid. As far as they, if I understand you correctly, because we didn't know that there was a, the roofing was under there, that's going to be a little more because of that. They thought it was down on, you know, that's understandable, you know.
Yeah.
But I do, I want you to remind them that we can, it'll save us money because we can take that as far as our landfill, you know, they don't have to charge a disposal fee to go Chattanooga. So remind them when they do that, that we don't want to pay someone else to do what we can get, we can get rid of it, I mean, as far as it'll go there, you know.
We have a county dumpster on the end of the building and they've been instructed to do that.
I just know sometimes they come in and they don't, you know, they're used to that, not used to not having a, you know, and they always come in and just remind them of that, so, yeah, you know what I mean, yeah.
Absolutely.
Any questions? Okay, thanks for the report, we appreciate, appreciate you, okay. Okay, we've done number eight, okay, this is the Resolution R-10-24, disposal surplus or anything, so. All right, we'll put that on there. Consent agenda, move down to number nine. Uh, this is the, uh, alcohol meter identification program, permit judge, all right, is Kerry here tonight?
Uh, I told her that I would present this to the commission, but what this is, the probate court currently provides fingerprinting services through, uh, Filprint, and Filprint has a master agreement with the GBI, and the probate court is a local service provider operating under that master agreement. The GBI is changing companies from Filprint to Idemia, and so this is the contract that shifts that over to, to them, uh, the same, same sort of agreement that we've had, and I don't think anything changes at all really, other than the.
What about the, the money process, the money, is it the same, you know, we're talking about that, about, you've already.
It is the same, uh, I talked to Kerry about that, they did not want to pay the $5 fee, but they've agreed to pay the $5 fee because she said she wouldn't do business with them if they didn't, so, that's back to the county. It is the same fee, everything's exactly the same, it's just a different company.
Okay, uh, any questions on that? Good job, Robin. I'm surprised she didn't come up and state her case, you know, it's election time, you know, all right, uh, what? That's true, I'm here. All right, number 10, amendments to the alcohol beverage control ordinance as recommended by the ABC Board, and, uh, Mr. Bradford, and we also have, we got one of our board members here tonight, too. Let him come up and talk to us, he's a member of our alcohol beverage control board.
Doug Moore, ABC Control Board Chairman. We've got a couple of things here we'd like to have looked at, and one is the mileage, the two mile we'd like to have removed. The golf course is, has its own, uh, language now.
Pretty sure all that's in here, but.
If you got it.
We did, same thing we got here.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we, we're looking at it, yeah.
You are a step ahead of me there. Mr. Bradford, you want, can you explain what, uh?
Sure, well, I mean, the reason, we've been kind of going back and forth, all of us, for quite a few months now, um, and the, what we're just trying to do is get compliant with the state because we are not a dry county anymore, so we need to be compliant with the state, and, uh, we've had some people come to us, uh, about, you know, being supported and having the choice of, of, of being able to sell spirits, and, and if I'm not mistaking, that was kind of put in, in 2017, uh, when it was brought in from liquor from the drink, um, so, uh, these are just kind of some things to, to look at that, that gets us, um, more compliant with the state and helps our, our local businesses that are here.
And the local golf course, you know, everybody knows how it works.
Yeah, and the.
They got a restaurant, you know, and a golf course is going to be a golf course.
Yeah, the, on the ordinance there, it looks a little scary because there's a lot of yellow, but that's just explaining, that's in our ordinance, explaining what a golf course is, so somebody couldn't just pop up and put in some putt putt or a gol, or something, and then say, oh, well, we want to sell some alcohol, or something like that, but, so this is, this defines what a golf course, um, is and how it may operate.
So what this, the first one is, the first ordinance would be to, and what changes about it is, it will allow them in the restaurant, because right now, are they serving alcohol?
Yes, they are.
I mean, like, but it's not, uh, you call it spirits.
Spirits.
Liquor. I mean, it's hard to believe. They sell beer and wine.
That's right, and this will give them, uh, the right to sell it, but also, they're responsible liability wise, and they're controlling it, there'd always be like, it wouldn't be just like, uh, brown bagging and going, so, from last way I read it, I just want to be sure that, yeah, and Robin, I guess, you're doing it, this is.
I did.
Yeah, you do this, so, yeah.
Yeah, they were doing them with brown bagging in Dade County.
Yeah.
Nowhere. I'll just go, you know, a little.
They got a option to get their license on not selling alcohol, you know, and so.
I'll start then, Mr. Lowery, you want to comment on it?
I think I'm going to.
We're not voting now, I just want you.
No, I'm thinking I'm going to need a little more time, uh, to look at, to look at this because there's one place on here that, I've got time to lose my computer.
Okay.
Look at number four there.
You want, you want a card copy?
No, I know right where it's ho, ho, right back up here.
That's fine, I mean, you can do it, you know, if you need it.
And this is just the first reading, I mean.
Yeah, it's in, it's in between the second. Second and third pages. Eating establishments only, malt beverages and wine, distilled spirits for on-premise consumption, maybe some only in golf course premises, having regularly serving prepared food, additional permanent and temporary points of sale of alcohol beverages may be established on the golf course premises outside of the eating establishment. I have a problem with that, so.
And what they're, what they're wanting to do on that, from what I understood, even back when they first came, was like when they have a golf tournament, uh, they evidently, on some of the tees, they set up a, a table and a portable, is that right?
That didn't say that, that leaves.
Well, that's, that's why we're.
Needs to be.
What that's saying.
I figured that's what y'all were.
Well, what it, what it's saying, so right now, there's a little bit of, uh, they're able to control the alcohol that is being served inside the restaurant, but they're not being able to control what is being out on the field. So people are, um, bringing, bringing in alcohol and brown bagging, um, out into the, the field, and so the golf course, you know, they don't have a way for those people to, to be able to purchase anything, so that, it kind of helps them regulate what's being done on the field, which I don't know if that's the, the green, maybe I should say the gr, I don't know what it's.
The course.
The course. Yeah, so you're going to have to.
They will control coolers and things coming in.
Yes.
Uh, there will not be.
Because what, what golf tournaments do is they have a golf cart dedicated to going around with a cooler, and if you want a beer, or you want a whatever, then you get it from them, and that way they can control it, and I'm sure that's what they're asking for.
They would be the controller, yeah.
They're just trying to move along with what the future is showing, you know?
But that's fine, I mean, if you want a little more time to look at it.
I'd just like to read it a little closer, but if y'all, but.
Uh, this is the first reading, we gotta have another reading, and then, you know, actually we got, but if you'd rather.
We got a board, it is a good job. I just want to read it from my own conscience.
Right, exactly, and I don't blame you one bit.
And that's why we have first and second reading, you know.
I don't know how long that's been on my computer, but you know what I've been going through, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I do, exactly.
I personally just want a little more time to read it and make sure I'm okay with it.
Mr. Hartline, we, you got anything?
As far as the golf course is concerned, I'm good with this, I don't, I mean, they're having to compete with other courses that's already doing it.
Yeah.
Even, even the other ordinance y'all are wanting, our restaurants are having to compete with other restaurants that are doing it, so we need to give them the benefit of making all the money that they can make.
If we don't, they're going, you know, they're losing a lot of business.
I mean, this has been brought, this was brought up five years ago, and, and basically I was told until someone comes and asks, I mean, Melissa's been working on it, she's talked to me about it, and, you know, I was told until we have somebody approaches that wants this, there's no need to change in it, well, now we're having people to approach us that wants it changed, so.
Absolutely.
It's, uh, it's our time to accommodate the restaurants.
Okay. Mr. Goff?
Well, it's like Mr. Moore said, it's just going where the future's taking us, and I've been in, been a long time at golf tournaments, and I, so I know how that, that works, uh, and I do know we can't, you know, this is just the first reading, so we can't pass anything tonight, is that correct?
No, that's right.
But it does give us time to look at it, and if we do come back with more questions, I just want to make sure that there's nothing in any of this, and I know most of that deals with a golf course, that opens up an avenue for somebody to do something, you know, and say, well, it's, it's in here, and hidden somewhere, I guess, a little loophole that they could have, because once somebody gets in and grandfathered in, it takes a change, but ordinances can change, obviously, that's what we're looking to do, so, uh, I, I'm good with what they're asking for, but I know that's nothing that we can do tonight. And I appreciate y'all for taking it on.
Well, you know, it's, it stops the brown bagging at the golf course.
Yeah.
And Mr. Bradford, you want to comment anymore?
Well, I mean, we've worked on this for a while, and it's, you know, my reasoning is to be compliant with the state and, and give the people what they want, and also, I, I want to add that I would like the, the ABC Board to have the authority to, to make these decisions and, and have, they have an application that they're able to fill, and, and they make those decisions, and it doesn't always have to, you know, come back to the commission, so this gives them the ability to, to make those decisions for the county of what is, because even though this is put in place, there's still an application that you have to fill out, that they have to agree, their board has to agree whether that is good for the county or not, so this gives them the authority that they need.
Okay, well, go ahead, Lamar, you're, we're putting that as a first reading, and then we can actually, uh, actually change or whatever we need to between now and the, and the next reading.
That's all I'm asking for, if it's a little time to, to look over it, make sure I'm comfortable with it.
That's good, we'll go ahead and put it, uh, as the first reading, we can consent again, it'll be fine. The next one here we can look at is the, um.
Thank you, sir.
About, um.
Oh, we're not done.
No, because we just talked about the one.
That was the golf course.
We need to, if you want to go and explain to us what the object is on the interstate as far as moving it, you know, we've got three different things here we need to.
Find some glasses here.
I think it's this one.
Yeah, uh, the other, on the ordinance is where, uh, when it was originally drawn up, you had to be two miles within the interstate. And when I was talking earlier.
Exit.
Right, exits, but that's where your police officers, your troopers, everybody was, you know, doing their drive bys and security. But now it's like, this restaurant, it's out on Wilkapp, that has a lot of clientele that comes in, you know, every week or every night, and they're wanting spirits, and we're just trying to get this moved or dropped from the, uh, ordinance to where we can serve spirits at these restaurants, just like we do in Jefferson. So, you know, that's basically what we're trying to do.
Lamar, you know, I'll start with you there, and you comment.
It's going to be the same thing, I'm going to need.
Okay.
So, can I touch on that a little bit?
Yeah, buddy.
All right, so what that is, is the, the original states that malt beverage could be on a state route, and then distilled spirits had to be on a state route within two miles of an interstate on route, off route, which puts it in five locations here in Trenton, Sligo, Wildwood, Horizon Farm, that was the only areas, and you had to be within two mile, at the time, two mile of the interstate and outside the city limits, so it didn't really, yeah, and it didn't really give us anywhere for them to be able to sell.
When it was drought up, I'm sure the guys that droughted it up was looking at big restaurants coming in at the exits, and it didn't happen.
At Manhattan, that's right.
So, I mean, and that was, that was, this was what was brought up five years ago, and y'all agreed then it needed to be done, and, and so I'm good with that because we have a restaurant now that's wanting to do it.
Right, right.
Mr. Goff?
And I don't have a problem with it, as long as those restaurants, it's still going by, the amount of food that they sell still dictates, if they're not settling an amount of food, they can't sell alcohol, is that correct?
Yes.
It doesn't change any of that?
Nothing. All it does is stop brown bagging.
Well, it stops, that was on the other one, this is interstate.
Well, that's right, I'm sorry.
Do you have anything, you have a comment?
Um, no, it's, you know, it's just part of the same thing that I have to say, it's, you know, being compliant with, uh, with the state and helping out with, with local places that we do have now and want to support, and, um, you know, they're, they are selling beer and wine, so, uh, the difference is, they would, could add some spirits, and, and the ones that I have talked to, you know, that, they're, they have a limited amount of what they want to sell anyway, so it's not, it, you know, it's, it, it's going to ease in, I feel like, and it's, it's not going to be, um, we're not going to see a huge, huge problem, I don't feel, um, and we've, we've really looked at this a lot, so, um, I think it would help out all of our, our little local people.
Okay, Lamar, again, you're putting this down as first reading, and then we can actually change if you feel like that, okay?
Yeah.
All right, put that on the consent again. Oh, we got one more here, that's, uh, submitting alcohol beverage control ordinance regarding brown bag, alcohol bag, on site consumption.
I guess, just kind of eliminating the brown bag.
This totally here is, is nothing but brown bag.
Yeah, this, this.
That's all it is, that's just totally, yes.
This is like eliminating the, the brown bag. Well, yeah, that's. That's the, it's consistent with the state law, so we're, this is just being compliant with the state law.
What she's talking about, if somebody give you, for your wife, a $400 bottle of wine, and you take it in the restaurant here, but you don't, you take two glasses of wine or have whatever you get, and then you want to take the rest of that home, you know, they actually, by law, they could seal that bottle and tape it, you take it back home, but they're having to use, their people record, their glasses, their, so they're going to charge a fee for having to handle this, you know, and seal it for you, take it back home, and that was one of the other things that was, that could be.
Yeah.
Involved in this is where they could, uh, charge a fee for.
It's court, court, court did your court fee.
Exactly.
I know they do it on cruises, if you, you know, you, you can sign on a cruise, but if you take it.
If you weren't licensed, you, uh, could not have brown bagging, if you, the only way you could do that if you were not licensed at all, so it does change the rule about brown bagging, uh, it does allow brown bagging, but it also allows the, uh, licensee to charge a corking fee on wine.
Well, yeah, it, the wordage, um, brown bagging is, is, we, we do not, that word needs to go away, we are not a dry county, that is a word used for dry counties, and now we've moved on because we are liquor by the drink, um, and so, take for instance, Canyon Grill, they, they're very established, they have been on that path, um, and they, we are, have liquor by the drink, so we've got to put in place laws that is going to prevent these things from coming back to them and coming back to the county, to the, the board, so this takes away the wordage of brown bagging, and it's compliant with the state of what they already mandate and check, so the check, the state checks these things if you have a license.
But if you have establishment that doesn't have a license, are you saying that a person could still bring wine in and, uh, I'd take permission of that owner and, like at a, an anniversary or whatever, you know, and are they still legally able to do that?
So, so if, if the person is not licensed, uh, it would be up to the restaurant establishment's owner.
But if they have a license, it's against.
This is what this is.
Yeah.
Mr. Lowery, I know you want, you want to study that a little more, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead and do the, do the first reading on it, and then, uh, Mr. Hartline?
Yeah, I'm good with this, I just, I want to talk with the owner of, uh, one restaurant, I'm 90% sure I know what the answer is because I talked to him the other day about it, but I just want to make sure before I agree on this one, so.
So you don't even want to do a first reading?
Yeah, this can be our first reading, I just, I just want to make sure that I'm in line with what they're wanting.
All right.
How is that going to affect, like, Canyon Grill?
That's what, yeah.
That's your question?
Yeah, basically what they're wanting to do is, if they, if they do liquor by the drink and malt beverage, then they will, you can, if you bring in a high dollar bottle of wine, then they will still, they, they will open it for you, but, and that'll be the only part that you can bring in, is like a high dollar bottle of wine or bourbon or something.
And they'll charge you, it gives them a right to charge.
They're going to charge you to open it, and then they'll close it.
Yeah. Mr. Goff?
I'm good with the first reading.
Yeah, and to say it again, that, this is what's compliant with the state, so that is already a state law, so that's why we were taking away the, the words of brown bagging, and, and we didn't really add that in because the state already regulates that, so.
Okay, just go ahead and put that on, uh, as a first reading, Dawn, just like the others, I'll beat the reading out then, okay? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. All right, you got anything else you want to add? You got anything, Robin, in the commission, if not, we're in the work session, we'll go ahead and, uh, we'll go ahead and adjourn, if y'all want to, we'll go right into our meeting, if you need to take a break, Lamar, any of y'all we can, if not, all right, we'll go ahead and move right on, you know, okay? All right. We'll go ahead and, um, we'll adjourn our work session, but we will go ahead and call to order our commission meeting on this, uh, March the 7th, 2024. Go into our meeting, and as always, Mr. Goff, if you would, I appreciate it to you, if you would, uh, please send prayer and praise allegiance, if everyone would stand, please, if you choose to, please.
You know, a lot of times I would give somebody something to, someone or something to pray about, but the old gentleman down on my far right down here, it is so good to see him here and doing as well as you're doing, Lamar, we're really glad for you and know that you've been blessed.
I couldn't believe you was here tonight.
That's great.
Dear heavenly Father, we are so thankful, as always, to be here to do the business of this county, and as we've already seen, it, it varies from month to month, and things that are more meaningful to some than there are others, but Lord, we, that's why we're here, Father, we thank you for that opportunity and privilege, and we pray, God, that you just bless everything that we do, that, Lord, that it's for the betterment of our county and citizens as a whole, we thank you, Lord, especially tonight, for Lamar being able to be here, the good report that he got, and he may have a ways to go, but I know that you're walking with him, and he knows that you're walking with him, he's never alone, so, Lord, we just thank you for that. We're in the time of qualifying and other people that are deciding to run for these seats and other seats throughout the county, throughout the state, and, Lord, we just pray that you would be with them, that they're running for the right reasons, and, uh, we'll do the very best that they can, whoever makes primaries and goes on to elections, it gives us that time to talk with them and to know them, because, Lord, we're blessed to be able to do what we do here, we don't have to do it in fear, we don't have to hide and do it, so, Lord, we just thank you for that, and we pray, Lord, you continue to bless this meeting tonight, Lord, that we'll do everything we can, Lord, that it might be the best thing we can do for our county and for our state, in Jesus' name we ask, amen.
Amen.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I forgive you, Mr. Hartline, I did that, I just, you get things on your mind, there's good that time, they don't sit and talk to you there. All right. Yeah. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Dade County Board of Commissioners, which takes place the first, at the first time on the first Thursday of every month, proper notice this meeting was given their legal origin in post sitting hall, this time I do need a roll call, uh, Mr. Lowery?
Here.
Hartline?
Here.
Goff?
Here.
Mr. Bradford?
Here.
In chair, it's present, we just have a, all right. All right, um, let's get, I almost skipped this last one, uh, anyone want to come up? We'll give you five minutes, want to talk to us about anything that you feel like government wise is going on, uh, I see a lot of people out there, like a lot of politicians, a lot of hot air out there tonight, but, you know, if we don't have anybody who want to talk to us, I'm going to start right here, just real quick, I don't, I don't think I'm out of line doing this because tomorrow is it, that's 12 o'clock, if you're going to run for office, you got to be out here and qualify, tell us who you are right quick and what you're running for, yeah?
Good evening, y'all, my name is Bob Woods, and I'm running for the county commission, District 3.
Excuse me, if, if anybody talking to you through the mic, that would be great to have people watching online, thank you.
Hey, Kerry, come up here and take it around to them, that'd be quicker.
Well, that.
Yeah, just take it, hand it, take it handy to them, that'd be quicker than them walking up here, yeah, some of them might be bashful, too, you know.
Good evening, y'all, my name is Bob Woods, I live in Rising Farm, and I'm running for the county commission's District 3 seat that Robert Goff currently has.
Okay.
Who's next?
Kiki.
Robbie.
Thank you, yeah, okay.
My name's Robbie Ryan, and I'm running for county executive, uh, legal name, Robert A. Ryan III.
Patrick.
My name's Patrick Kiki, I'm running for the at-large position on the school board.
Okay.
I'm coming to Daniel. BJ?
Hi, I'm Board Hartline, I'm running for District 4 commission seat.
Daniel?
I'm Daniel Case, I'm running for executive commissioner, uh, with Don Townsend here, good friend of mine, Robbie Ryan, both friends, uh, we hope to keep this a real nice campaign, quite frankly.
I've got one.
Okay, you've got one.
And I am Don Townsend, and I'm running for county executive, and look forward to a good, clean race.
Appreciate all, all of y'all.
Wait, we have one more?
Well, we have.
Hey, I know everybody saves the best for last. All right, I'm Melissa Bradford, running for, well, for District 4. Anybody else want to announce tonight?
Well, yeah, they've already qualified and announced, so that's a good thing, you know, so tomorrow's 12, okay, all right, if there's nobody else, we'll move on. Oh, we got John Huffman here tonight, come on, John.
I'm John Huffman, and I, I run for office.
Oh, I thought you were going to announce, John.
All right, if anyone wants to step out for about 15 minutes or so, feel free, and I'll let you know when I'm done, no worries, please.
Five minutes.
So right up front, today, when I'm done speaking, I'm leaving this room, unless you're placing me under arrest, please don't chase me down or block my exit as you. Unless you're placing me under arrest, please don't chase me down or block my exit as you have done in previous meetings. And this will not turn into a five-on-one slash entire-room-on-one free-for-all. I get my citizen time, I say my piece, and then I am done. If I am here having to do this, it's already too late for your words. So, I will take your actions, if ever, as your response. And to those listening, I hate having to speak fast, but again, that is on your commissioners, not me. I know I will go over by a lot. So, unless a few citizens want to volunteer to lend me their five minutes, I will be using my time from April through November because those months and more, I'll just be at home waiting and watching for results. With new county executive and commissioners finally on the horizon, it's my hope it will be the new people who finally resolve old problems that have existed in Dade for decades. My time today is to cover seventeen of some of the issues I have spoken about here over the years and provide a quick plan to get them addressed. And if you don't know about some of these, I'd ask the person sitting next to you. Number one, this commission laughing at citizens, rolling your eyes, ignoring citizens and other mannerisms and practices unacceptable by paid professional employees. The plan, get control of yourselves. We pay you to represent us and those behaviors are all on you, not the people you represent. Remember that you work for the people. Your income comes from the people. You all are the reason that these meetings have been empty of citizens for years and that every eye roll and chuckle by you is all on video to the world forever. Two, this commission picking and choosing which citizens it represents and then deserting your duty for others. Stop that. Condemn that and never speak it again. Represent all people and each person. You get paid by each person, voted bond by each person, supposed to be the represented voice of each person, and you're expected to canvass as many individuals as you can every day so that you're always representing each individual. Dade County, Georgia should not be the only place in the country where during formal meetings, while a whole room watches and remains silent, the commission announces on video to the world many times over years that certain citizens, especially veterans, are getting cut off from receiving representation the citizens paid for and voted for. This is not America and this should not be what Dade is known for. And you all let it happen again and again. Three, citizens having to pay Don Townsend extra money in addition to his eighty thousand dollar salary for free public information. Stop that. Public information should be free. The people already pay for the supplies, so information requests should never cost anything. Don Townsend is already very well paid. And the fact that there is information that people have to ask and pay for instead of it being already presented and posted and available by the county is a failure on you guys' communication and transparency and not something that people should have to be penalized for. End, end this side game money train into Don's wallet from citizens just trying to get public information. Number four, your practice of using people's money to grow government and provide you with personal assistance to do your work for you. Stop that. Salaried employees are expected to stay until the work is done, even if that is later than five P M. and two P M. on Fridays. Salary doesn't clock out like hourly people do. So, you shouldn't see salaried only working hourly hours and then everybody walking out at the same time. Hold the highest paid accountable or fire them and promote the assistance. Nothing in tiny Dade requires two people to do the same job. And additionally, fire all the people who are brought in to compensate for skills you don't want to learn. Because it's the people's dime, the people need to approve every hiring decision. And you need to justify why you are unwilling or unable to get the work done yourself for your huge salary instead of the people paying for you and your extra assistance. Number five, the sploshed video where the people were repeatedly told it was made by the county instead of giving credit and being transparent about the specific individuals who really made it. Just be honest. The county didn't do it. Everybody knows that. Just post who did it and how much the people paid them to do it. Easy. Number six, citizens given bags of pennies when they are due refunds from this administration and the sheriff's office being speed dialed to send deputies to participate in this joke and to surround those citizens to provide citizens counting pennies law enforcement. Stop that and stop all the jokes played on people by the Rumley administration. Fire anybody who participates in that. It's unacceptable and this should not be what Dade is known for. Number seven, information requests not being answered because they are phrased as statements and not as questions. Again, if the person responding to the information request can't figure out what the request is for, then ask for clarification. Denying the request because the asker wrote, don't need a lot of extra paper, just bottom line info, put on yell sticky is fine, thanks, is wrong. This is not Jeopardy where the citizens have to cater to you and phrase every sentence with a question mark just so you all can understand what are questions and what aren't. That's not funny. And the bottom line is you still got away with requests never getting answered. People are not your jokes. Number eight, taxpayer money going to the newspaper to post legal notices and then the people having to pay the newspaper again to read those legal notices instead of those notices also being posted on the county's website so that citizens can read free information without having to pay for it. That's a five-minute fix. Just post legal notices also on the county website. Done. Number nine, people being told to bury their tires. No, dig up all those tires, apologize to the people for even suggesting that, and let's get them recycled and out of Dade. Ten, citizens told to leave tires in the woods and not to recycle them because they are too dirty. And then no event happens just to get those hundreds, if not thousands, of tires out. Same thing, apologize to the people for saying that and let's get those tires out and recycled. Number eleven, the reservoir goof-up where we were told it was a critical need since the nineteen sixties. And now sixty-four years later, it is still nothing but a publicly-owned cornfield and pumpkin patch joke that the people got bagged with and are supposed to just roll over and accept, plus interest. Let's just start digging and stop stalling and making excuses. Number twelve, the county animal shelter promised, at least by the two thousand nine fifteen years ago, sploshed that every other commissioner project in Dade County, including walking tracks and playgrounds and tiny picnic pavilions, can get on the list later but still get done sooner. And we keep getting the carrot that you are working on the county animal shelter. Yeah, for fifteen years now, right. You aren't fooling anybody. Same thing, just start building and stop stalling and making excuses. Number thirteen.
Getting closer on, on the five.
How much more you got, John?
Well, I have until number seventeen where.
Well, you can have mine. You can have my five minute, something like that. If, if it's alright with the chairman.
No, it's fine.
Number thirteen, the lack of transparency in what commissioners do for us for the pay and why we even need commissioners at all. Not a single commissioner addressing the thousands of their citizens on social media. Not a single commissioner individually providing daily updates of their district or their county. Social media has been around for twenty-seven years. Colton is on social media. Mike Cameron is on social media. Your bosses are on social media. Thousands and thousands of Dade residents are on social media every minute of every day. So, how are any of you representing when you are some of the one, only ones not on social media? You are only representing yourself and holding Dade back by your unwillingness to get current and engage with the people on methods the people are using and you aren't. Just do it. Number fourteen, making the people sign petitions and then throwing them away. People forming committees to do the work for you and then you coming back and discounting and changing their decisions and then blaming everybody else. Just stop it. No more petitions, no more committees, no more wasting the people's time and running around just for your enjoyment and entertainment. Number fifteen, the North Dade Old School ISO we all own and is a first impression of our county, but we are also paying the J D A. and I D A. and Alliance for Dade and others to promote Dade County, telling investors to ignore those ISOs and put their money into a crumbling county. So, just put a curb-friendly face on it, put a mural on it. Something so that when people drive by, it's not a Dade embarrassment that we all own. And so, we aren't also kicking our own rear end, throwing money at people to say Dade is great when you can just look at it and see it's a slum we all, for some reason, are living with instead of fixing. Number sixteen, in twenty twenty-two, Georgia Legislative and Congressional Reapportionment Office provided one map that combined the county commission districts and the school board districts for Dade. The school board accepted this new map. The county commissioners rejected it and are still using the districts from two thousand four, which are not accurate. Ted even said that using it would owe Dade up to an election lawsuit, but he did it anyway. In keeping the old map, you are making more work for the election office and for the people voting who got changed and have to vote in two districts now because of you. So, call the reapportionment office up, apologize to them for blowing off all the time they spent to make this right, adopt the new map, stop this two-maps thing, and stop Dade from living eighteen years in the past. Number seventeen, and most recent, under the Rumley law that is more applicable in large cities than in tiny Dade County, that volunteer unpaid citizens can only talk for five minutes while government-paid comrades don't get that warning and can talk as long as they want. What reason is there that you justify that it is okay for you to cut off only citizens and not everybody who speaks? And it is a law. Otherwise, why would you even suggest that hundreds slash thousands of people need to waste their time signing a petition to stop it? We all know it's Ted and he could stop it tonight if he wanted to. And Melissa even said that if citizens had ideas with solutions, they could talk up here for two hours if they needed to. And that's what I'm doing tonight. Not two hours. Do the citizens know that? Because Ted doesn't, as you can tell tonight. And then the Sentinel put example after example of citizens who talk for greater than five minutes. Yes, but what the Sentinel did not report is that all of those citizens were warned by Ted upfront just like tonight, that he only gives them five minutes. And then Ted, you said that I'm the only one who has complained about this. Well, Melissa saying citizens can get two hours is showing she doesn't agree with you. And all of the Sentinel citizens going over after they had been warned show that they don't agree with you either. You just can't see it and you give some citizens more latitude than others. Not as much as you give your buddies though, who you don't warn about your law at all. Just stop it and let people say what they need to say. All people, not just your paid buddies. Just think about this for a second. You are all paid by government, so you can speak all you want without Ted's warning you. But if your wife or your children had an issue they wanted to speak about at this podium, I can't believe that all of you would just sit there as Ted told your family they only got his five minutes. There are military veterans and public servants in this room that have watched it happen over and over and you never speak up. Maybe it's because none of you have been on this side of this podium, fighting for your family's rights. I don't know. I am not okay with it being applied to me and I darn sure would never be okay with Ted warning my daughter or my wife or my mother or my friends or my neighbors or anybody. It's simple. Limit everyone or limit no one. Change the script. No more of Ted's personal five-minute clock to just citizens law. It's not a fair law and it doesn't even make sense in Dade County. And finally, number eighteen, Dade Transit. Many people in Dade don't have cars. Sorry? I can't hear.
Go ahead, John.
Eighteen.
Go ahead. Please have him on.
And finally, number eighteen. Sorry about the typo. Dade Transit. Many people in Dade don't have cars or can't drive or have one car that is being used by other family members. So, many people in Dade use and need Dade Transit public transportation to get to work, to shop, to get to appointments, et cetera. But there are holes in Dade Transit coverage that the people have had to fill for decades. The following information is from the county website. Dade Transit requires a three-day working notice to schedule a trip to Trenton. Chattanooga trips require a minimum seven-day notice. For many people, appointments change or new appointments become available or someone calls out of work, so someone else is needed to come in, or people run out of food and need food now. They don't have this kind of days or a week notice. They need the ride now and today. Dade Transit does not run on Saturdays or Sundays or government holidays. So, even though government is not working, on those days, citizens still need to get to work and need rides. Number, Dade Transit coverage is only from four thirty A M. to three P M. Monday through Friday. So, anybody who works anytime between three P M. and four thirty next morning is out of luck and needs to find their own ride, which if they had their own ride available, they wouldn't need Dade Transit. They end up walking miles in the dark, up and down mountains or on Highway eleven and other streets that are not set up for pedestrians at all. So, my recommendation is to do what millions of service people in the military have had to do for centuries. Cover the need with existing people, not use taxpayer money to hire additional employees to compensate and divide these kinds of duties amongst the current salary-paid employees. Government is one of the largest and highest-paid employers and employees in Dade County, paid for by the very people who themselves can't get to work. So, the plan is simple. Last speech. Make a list of all current salary government employees. Assign each employee a week, including a weekend. Have one phone that becomes a publicized dial-a-ride number. That employee is on call the nights and weekends and holidays for a week that Dade Transit doesn't cover. When you get a call, you give rides, no excuses. At the end of their shift, the employee turns the phone over to the next person on the watchbill. Very easy. I mean, volunteer firefighters get paid nothing to risk their lives running into fires to perform their duties. And they are on call and available similar to this, so it should be nothing for Dade government who are paid, not volunteers, to be available to drive people around one or two weeks a year. And you may not even get called, but at least you're available with a designated person and people know that coverage continues twenty-four seven. The need for public service doesn't end at three P M. on weekdays. And this continuation of public transportation coverage has been the duty of private citizens taking up the slack for far too long when it is such an easy fix. So, here are eighteen issues with plans to get them fixed. And there are many more that the thousands of our friends, neighbors, family, and renters outside the clicks in this room are living with every day. With so much Dade government, it shouldn't take an unpaid, nobody citizen who you all laugh at, ignore, and cut off to tell you this stuff. And you even keep criticizing me because I haven't come to you to personally discuss these issues. I don't work for you. You work for me. So, if you really wanted to talk or get a new list of stuff to fix because you fixed everything on this one, you'd spend your own time and gas to find me, just like, well, between Dade Helps and your Dade Helper, that's fourteen thousand people that know how to get ahold of me every day. Just ask one of them. I wish good luck to the new administration because you will have your work cut out for you. People are already discouraged by the lack of new and current choices on the ballot, so they are already preparing for four more years of the same old thing. And they have even offered to pay the qualification fee for me to run for office just to get some energy in here finally. So, good luck to whoever takes over this mess. And Ted, if you remember years ago at the Civic Center, their folks were shorthanded and asked me to help with the community awards banquet. And I was at the front door, holding the door open for people as they were walking in. And you came in with your family and you turned to me and chuckled. And all you said while I held the door for you was, you trained to be a greeter at Walmart? And then you all walked in. You remember that? How you treated me like a piece of crap while I was helping you? I do, and my family remembers that. And then year after year of you laughing at me and people at these meetings, even today. So, back at you, to all the old regime who this is your final term. What's the saying? Don't let the door hit you. You know what?
Thank you, John. I appreciate, appreciate you.
I am done and I think I'll leave for a lot of months. And you all have eighteen things to fix or most likely not. Take care and I'll see you around.
Yeah, thank you, John. We always appreciate John telling us what a good job we do, you know? And he come back, John, anytime. Yeah.
Hey, John? John?
Go, go ahead, come on.
John, can we ask, can I tell you something?
Thanks for five minutes. Appreciate that.
Can I tell, can I tell you something?
I don't want to get it started because you're likely to have it happen. I don't, please.
It's a good, it'll be short. It's a good, it'll be short and sweet, I promise.
Just listen to him, John.
Give him the same respect he give you.
That's right. We listen to you.
We've had our run-ins over the years. I handled it badly. The Bible says that you don't answer anger with anger. So I'm apologizing to you. I want you to forgive me.
Okay, let's move on.
There's one more that needs to speak.
Got one more?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, come on.
I'm sorry. I had a couple of things.
Oh, go ahead. No, that's what...
But before that, I just have a question clarifying about the... About the five minutes, clarifying about the five minutes. I know at the school board, if you want more than five minutes, you just call ahead and get on the agenda and tell them what you want. Isn't that true for the county, too? Like, if you need more than five minutes to speak, you can call in and ask to be put on the agenda as a citizen?
And you can, yeah.
Okay. I was just making sure. You don't have to be an employer or anyone if you have something you can do.
You can do that and put, we'll go to the work session. That way it's informed where you can file.
Right, okay. I actually just wanted to say thank you to Stacy because in that last big storm that we had, I had a massive tree come down. My husband was out of town. Georgia Power was there three times. I was working with an electrician and everything because it pulled the mast off of our house and did a lot of stuff. It actually caused damage to our appliances because it broke the ground and everything got a huge power surge, and we're having to replace appliances with the insurance company. But it wasn't until 3 o'clock that Georgia Power was like, "Oh, you have to go get a permit." And all, and I was like, it's like, you know, at this point, well, I'm sorry, it was about 3:45. And I called, and Stacy was like, "Get down there, and I'll get up there, and I'll get it done." And I saw Alex, and he was like, "Somebody will come get it done for you." And at the time, most people didn't know, but my father-in-law had just been put in hospice, and he passed away two days later. So in the middle of everything going crazy, we were dealing with that, and it was just... I just wanted to say thank you for taking time to work with me and get that done. So, and then Chief Kelly would like me to say for the new home fire department that we got our ISO rating, and it's a 5.5X, and we just wanted to make sure that you guys have that information. 5.5X, yep. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, anyone else want to come up? Oh, you do? Okay.
My name is Paul Cummings. I live in Wildwood at 1860 Pope Creek Road. We just opened a new wedding venue, and my daughter runs it. I just want to tell all of you. I know Ted. I know Don. I've known Don a long time. Kindness looks good on Dade County. What I saw was not kind. If you have the chance to greet everybody with love in your heart, love in your heart, and be kind to other people. Six years ago, I had a stroke. I couldn't talk, couldn't read, couldn't write. I lost my whole career. I fought every day to speak again. I have aphasia. Massive stroke. Coded three times to fight for the chance to say something like, "Be kind to other people." Just be kind. Don't make statements like that. That's not the way we ought to be in Dade County. I was embarrassed. Embarrassed. I just spent three and a half billion dollars in the last two years restoring a place, and I'm not due to save that house when you drive down Pope Creek Road. I could have torn it down and built a new one for a quarter of the money. But I love Dade County. I love this place. Took more than a minute because it's hard with aphasia to get the words out. Be kind. Be loving. Be joyful and turn Dade County into a place that doesn't take shots in anybody else. That's rude.
A little bit on that, but I don't want to go to the podium because, for example, I know two people running for office, and I heard the laughter and giggles back here. And not knowing who any of those are, the one person I did see was somebody running for office. I didn't hear and see who it was that laughed back there, but that's who mine went to. And I hope it wasn't you, knowing that you're running for office, but it was the member that you're sitting with. Do I agree with John Houghman? Not really. Sometimes, maybe. But like Paul said, be kind. Be kind. We don't have to agree to what they're saying and what they believe in. Be kind. It's not hard. It don't cost anything. It's free. You want votes, you want votes, Daniel wants votes, Don wants votes, Melissa wants votes. Be kind. It will probably get us a whole lot further in the community with a whole lot more people standing behind you, supporting you, and getting you where you want to be.
Thank you.
Thank you. We all have opinions. We all have opinions.
I'm Diane Rumley, and I'm sure he doesn't want me up here, but I just want to say, this group is a wonderful group of commissioners, and they've put up with a lot of stuff through the years with just different issues. There's things that come up all the time that I don't agree with you and you don't agree with me, and it's okay. I've never, I've been married to Ted, we're almost 50 years. The end of this, the end of this year will be 50 years for us. He's the kindest, most gentle person I have ever known in my life. I could not do his job. I would already be in jail. But what happened tonight, and I totally understand it. Last meeting, John said his little five-minute thing again about not having more than five minutes. That's all he talked about, not having more than five minutes, which made no sense. And then he questioned a few things. I was standing at the door because it was very crowded here. And then when he walked by, he went, he stopped because these guys back here, some of them were here and saw, and he got as close as he could to my face without touching me and went, "Ha, ha, ha." And I dodged him, and poor Ms. Sarah Moore almost fell. She was standing beside me. That's the kind of stuff we've put up with, and I'm not taking up for anybody, but it's so hard to sit through that kind of stuff when somebody's criticizing your family and people that you care about. We, I love Dade County. I wouldn't want to be anywhere else, and I think they all feel, I know Ted does, but I think they all feel the same way, too, or they wouldn't put up with this bull, you know? It's hard, and it's hard sometimes not to want to say something. So the people here tonight, a lot of them were just kind of, it's that, it's just that much. How much more do we have to take? John does some great things for people. He really, really has a heart to serve. I don't know what's going wrong with him, that he wants them to number their things, I guess, of what they do. And there are so many, Ted's phone is where it rings all the time. He's out in the storms, and a lot of these guys, when it's not time, it's not nine to five or eight to five, they're out there cutting tree limbs or getting this or helping somebody on the road. There's more to this job that they do that they don't have to do. And all of you that are running, I'll pray for you because it's not easy.
Five minutes.
It's not easy on the front. Okay.
Ted, happy one, happy one.
But I've never, I've never said anything at these meetings, but I'd just like tonight, had to. So, and I know what these guys back here, it's just too much. And I wish John well. I mean, I pray for him, too. I've read a thing today, this morning, in my Bible devotion, and I thought, okay, this is to John. But I can't speak to him, you know, I can't speak to him. But that's just, I just wanted to say this. I'm proud of these guys, and I'm proud to live in Dade County and looking forward to the new administration. I'm glad Ted's getting out. It's time. It's time for us, but anyway, thank y'all.
Anybody else want to talk?
So this is a different direction here. Norman Blake, born in Chattanooga, Tennessee, grew up in Sulphur Springs. He's basically an icon. He's basically a guitar god in the world of music, rhythm, or bluegrass, all that. After being discharged from the Army, Blake moved to Nashville and became a studio musician for 10 years and toured with recorded singer Johnny Cash. So basically, he's a, you know, he's a legend. As my dad says, his fingers dance on the guitar as he plays. So what I'm getting at is I feel like we need, I think we need to showcase culture here. Like, this guy is a legend in the music world. And in my opinion, it would be awesome to showcase some kind of statue of him or some kind of something, a plaque just to remember him by, because he is getting old. He's, I guess you know him, too, you know? I mean, his awards and honors, Blake played Raising Sand by Robert Plant and Alison Cross, which won five Grammy Awards on the soundtrack, "Oh, Brother, Where Art Thou?", which won a Grammy Album of the Year. So I just feel like he's a really, you know, he's somebody that, somebody could come here into this town and look at the, look at the, maybe some kind of something for him and know he's from Rising Fong, Georgia. So that's all I wanted to say.
No, that's a good, it is, it's something that, he was actually in line to be in the Georgia Music Hall of Fame, and he turned that down, you know? He flat turned it down for whatever reason. I mean, he was up for that, and he just didn't want it, you know? And that's been five years ago. He's private. He don't want people to know even where he lives, you know? But that's a good idea, though, because he is a famous person. Anybody else?
As I said earlier, my name's Patrick Ecky. I'm also a board member on the, for the New Home Community Center in the Big Woods. Next Friday, we're holding a meet and greet up there for anybody running for office who wants to come up there and talk with anybody that wants to come up in the county, meet the people that are running for office. If I haven't gotten in touch with you, I don't think I've gotten in touch with you yet. If you want to come up next Friday, it starts at 6 o'clock. There'll be, you know, refreshments, drinks, stuff like that, if you want to come up and meet them. I think Mr. Hartline will be there as well, so he's the current commissioner for that area. So if you have any questions for him, you can talk to him as well. Also have a question. When you turn on the New Home Road off of Brow, I think that's where Brow starts, we get a lot of 18-wheelers that come back there way back where I live at. The road is really torn up. There's a pothole, probably about that deep and about that wide, right there at the beginning of New Home. Is there any way that we could get a work order done where the road crew could come out, get that taken care of? I kind of have it memorized where it's at, so I know where to avoid.
Right.
But at night, if you don't see it, just looking out for others.
I'll let Billy know.
Driving down through there, so I just wanted to bring that up.
We haven't had any calls on, I know, not that. We've had a lot of complaints on 18-wheelers, and we've got signage up there. But some of them, you know, go to, and deliver out there at Breed Loews, out there to steal.
Yeah, and that's where, that's where most of them go.
You know, that's their route, you know?
When New Home Grocery was open.
But we were getting some that weren't supposed to be up there, so maybe we stopped that, you know?
Yeah, when New Home Grocery was open, we'd get a few more big rigs up there, but it's just some of the ones that come up there, I know they don't contribute to all of it, but it is starting to get a little sketchy through there. So I just wanted to bring that up to you.
All right, thank you, thank you. Okay, anyone else?
I'll be brief. I have been interested in following the Industrial Development Authority meetings, and I'm struggling, it could be owner-operator error, on finding announcements on dates and their times, requests that maybe we could get a little bit more transparent on that with the live streaming.
With the Industrial Development Authority? Is that what you're talking about?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Carrie, I mean, you can take care of, I mean, as far as, do they post on our website?
They have their own website. And they have a page as a website, and they post their meetings and their agendas. I don't know if they post their minutes or not.
They really should start their own hours, you know? I mean, since it's counted, they need to be, I didn't know. They talk to them about tomorrow, yeah, let's see. All right, anyone else? All right, we'll move on. Mr. Lowry, you want to start with your report, please?
Yeah, since I got all this started, which is a good thing. I've enjoyed it, most of it. It's been informative and held in the right manner for the best part, so. I'm giving our 911 activity report for our EMS. We had 213 calls this, for the month of February. Our fire departments, which is 264. Our law enforcement, which is 2,467, for a total of 2944. In February, we had 16 new E911 addresses, and total E911 addresses for properties was 28. We're still, I know Phillip gives a report something about like this on electrical expenses. So we are still growing. The, for the people, especially that may that live in the north end of the county, we were expecting to have internet done by now. They, Trenton Telephone, Adam Austin talked to me Thursday of last week, and they're got two pieces of equipment that keeps being backordered, and that's the only thing that's holding them up. And they're wanting it done, too, because they've not got, they're not getting any money in. And I live over on Creek Road, on the other side of Creek Road, I mean, I know you, it's just been a while.
Get ass.
Yeah. I helped the sprinkler people. Yeah, whenever they was in there trying to help you out, so. But it's, they're working hard to try to get it in, and hopefully it's going to be soon. We thought it would be by the end of January, but they just didn't get the parts that they needed. And I don't know, it's a thing we're running into all over the world right now. So, but I just, I appreciate everybody. I'm probably not running again either in two years because of my health. I don't know that for a fact yet, but probably not if I make it that long. But not because I don't enjoy doing it. It's just, maybe it's time for somebody else to take the helm and run it. I don't, Robert is, I don't think there's no better person than Robert, all our commissioners. I just, Melissa knew her family, but she was just kids. Her dad and my dad, they run around together a little. I've only got to know Phillip in this last four and a half years, but I've got a lot of respect for Phillip. But Robert has preached funerals for little children that, a 21-year-old, my neighbor. They didn't have anybody to know who to go through. Robert coming down through. That's kind of the people you got. And then I, there's so much I could tell on Ted Rumley.
I don't guess so anymore.
There's so much I could tell on him that... There's so much I could tell on him that, uh, intake on that. But when, not long after I was first elected, back in two thousand and two, we were down at the Wildwood Sanitarium, Wildwood Lifestyle Center. We call it now. And we were having, Ted was had done some work for them before he could, became commissioner. They were getting his opinion on it. We walked, there was a man that walked up and I just happened to be where I could hear it. And, uh, this little Vietnamese boy, little young boy, probably eight, nine-year-old, come up and hugged Ted and said, "Thank you for the guitar." Ted bought him a guitar. And they were poor, they were really poor. So that's kind of man, you know. He brought me and my wife breakfast, Valentine's Day. Stuff like that means a lot. Brought Valentines and, and food. That man, just means a lot. He's a good person. I hate he hesitate to strive that he gets, but we all know it's there and it's just part of the job. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hartline?
Before I start, I will say this, I've been here for five years now and it's the hardest thing I've ever done, to sit up here and have to take stuff from people and not say something back. The industry I come from, people didn't have feelings. That's, I'm coming from old-school men that didn't care about their feelings. And if you come up here, I done good tonight, I kept my mouth shut. You know, I've, it's hard. Especially when you say Dade County's a slump. I, you know, I've lived here my whole life, I've traveled all over the United States and this is where I, this is my home. So I take offense to that comment. That's, but I'm learning. I'm, I'm doing better with keeping my mouth shut. With that being said, parks and wreck, like we talked about earlier, we've replaced, Stacy has stepped down and we've got Brandon Stevens taking over the park. With new buildings coming up, more building maintenance going on, more permits. Uh, we just felt like it would help take a load off of Stacy on that aspect. There's a possibility in the near future, maybe we will be doing building inspections, so that's going to grow his job even more. That's no time soon, but that's a possibility in the near future. I think Brandon, Brandon will do a great job down there at the parks. He's young, he's energetic, I mean, he's, he really likes it. It's just going to take him a while to get, to know everything he needs to do without somebody showing him and telling him. Baseball signups is over with, soccer, I don't know if they started the soccer signups yet for youth. Uh, I know we had about a hundred-and-eighty or a hundred-and-ninety baseball sign up. That's all we've really got going on at the park right now. And on electrical inspections for February, we had nine new constructions, two new temporary constructions, um, six alternatives, alterations, a garage, a shop, and two more mobile homes. So that was twenty-one electrical inspections for the month of February, so that's basically almost one a day on that. But the, the number I keep looking at is that nine new constructions last week. Last month, I think we had eight or nine new homes there too as well. So we're, we're still, I figure we'll hit a hundred homes this year. So, I mean, we're growing every day.
Okay, good report, Mr. Goff?
All right, real quick, I want to say that, you know, I always talk about Splosh, and then when the mountain rescue came tonight, we see one, one more place where, uh, it is so important for these numbers, but our Splosh was up, actually down over last, last month, but three-hundred-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-four. If you look back at the same time last year, the same month, it was two-hundred-and-sixty-five, uh, five. So, uh, shopping local buys all these things we have. I do want to mention some names, and I know in any kind of, in any kind of setting where you go to mention the names, you're going to forget some. But I usually do this because these kids mean a lot to me. They're not mine, some of them, I don't even know, I just read their name in the paper. I see their picture and what they've accomplished, and it's through our high school, through sports and literary, uh, chorus, basketball, and all these things. I want to tell you something, Dade County's second to none. But there's one guy I really want to mention, I mentioned some names here and I hope I don't leave anybody out. One of them is a young man by the name of Landon Williams. Now, if you don't know Landon, Landon just won his third straight state wrestling championship in the state of Georgia. That's huge. That's somebody, but he's, he, he's a good kid, he applies himself. Eli Kimball, Landon, and Jacks Gwynne, uh, they, and, and on that, the team, wrestling team, and all the members of the team. Uh, literary, I don't know anything about literary, but these people were there, they did it, and they shined for Dade County. Uh, Jordan Crane and, and Aiden Ross, I don't know if that's any kind of, uh, Rodney, Rodney's proud of one of them, man. Excuse me, my voice is going. Allstate and Chorus, Nyla Smith, Rock Chaney, Jack Dupree, Trent Dunn, Drake Blevins, and Zoe Gibson. Uh, these kids went and did great in singing, uh, and music. So they're learning a lot more than what you think, and it's not all about sports. It never was. Girls' basketball went round one, I think it was, in the state tournament. Boys went round two, they got knocked out, but they were there, uh, in, in Georgia and then. So, there's so much that's going on good, we usually can hear about the bad. Uh, and this seem like a night of farewells and goodbyes, it's not. I've got nine more months to enjoy. Uh, but I, I look forward to the season, the next season of my life. And, uh, as Diane said tonight, whoever wins these elections, I'll be praying for you. I, I told Robbie, uh, I think the other day, I said, "Well, if I didn't like you, I'd wish you, I'd wish you good luck." But, uh, we're, we're living here, you know, when we see what happened in Catoosa County the other night, well, what's happening right now and today, and you may not be aware of that. A group of people, and I'm a Republican, I have been, uh, basically all my life. I voted both ways, because you used to be. People had good ideas, it didn't matter what party they were, but over there, there's a group of about sixteen people that would maybe look at Mr. Wood here, General Wood, and say, "No, you can't run. We're not going to let you qualify." That's wrong in a thousand ways. But that's what our coun, uh, country is trying to come to, where somebody can tell you, "Look, folks, it's up to us, it's up to us to elect those we, we pledge allegiance to the flag and the republic for which it stands." Not a democracy, but a republic that says, "We'll vote you in, we'll let you do your job, we'll vote you out if you don't do the job." And that is a republic. So, you know, we, we're in the midst of a presidential election coming up. Looks like it's going to be Joe Biden and, and, uh, Donald Trump. We need to pray about it first before we do anything. We need to pray about who we're going to vote for. And we need to listen and see what the issues are and what they're looking to do. So that's, that's all important stuff. But I just want you to know, there's good things happening here with our kids in Dade County that we need, if you don't, if you know these kids, when you see them, congratulate them. If you don't know them and somebody says, "That's so-and-so," go over and tell them, "I appreciate what you're doing." Because that's inspiring other kids that could be anywhere else, doing anything else, but they're doing something constructive and with some of them, it will take them through life. So, uh, I thank you for, uh, almost sixteen years, and I'll finish the last nine as best I can. And, uh, some of you guys can, as I told a guy four years ago, well, three and a half years ago, I said, "You can have it in four years." So, I won't tell you who that was, and I don't know who's going to get it, but, uh, we're in the midst of a, a very trying time in our nation, and it comes down to the county. A lot of people don't trust us because they don't trust Washington. Look, folks, it's different. We live here. One reason I don't have social, social media, I go to church and people say, "Can I ask you? Can I tell you something? Will you give me an answer?" That's my social media, is people being able to see me in the grocery store, see me on the street, see me at church, see me anywhere else, and they can ask you about what's going on, without having to put up with sometimes some things you don't want to put up with on social media. Because none of us in here want to tuck our thumb and poke ourselves in the eye, it hurts. And sometimes looking at social media, that's about what it's like, just sitting there poking your own self in the eye. I digress, you didn't give me five minutes, but I took.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Ms. Baffert?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that too. Um, okay, I've got short and sweet. Tire amnesty, uh, the eleventh of May, uh, nine to two, and kind of goes along with, with, um, what this meeting has been about. Um, uh, when you're there, you know, try, we've had some calls, there's, uh, some people that are having people help them, um, some older people, and they may not have a county tag, but they're having pe, family help them. So, you know, you see that, don't get upset. Um, that's, that's probably their son or daughter or somebody trying to help them with the trailer. So, um, uh, they've talked to me and, um, I've okayed a certain, a certain amount of stuff. So, um, it is for the county, it is for the people, and we're trying to help them as much as possible. And that, as long as we got room, we're, we're going to try to help you as much as possible. So, um, please come out, May eleventh, we'll be ready. Probably rain or shine, um, not unless it's, it's really, really bad, then we'll have the date on the, the eighteenth. That's about, about it. The, you know, the, the transfer station's just kind of trucking along as usual, so we were.
We're still going to take, is it, was it twenty tires, how many?
Yeah.
For, for household.
Yeah.
And we'll be there about all day. We, we used to get there real early and we, when it slows down, usually it's around two or three o'clock.
Yeah, yeah. So, and, you know, if, if, if you've got twenty-one or you got twenty-five, we're, we're not going to crucify anybody or, you know, we'll, we, we do want them clean, unfortunately, that's, that's the way the grant reads and, and they don't want to accept them with all kinds of garbage on them because it is a recycling thing. So that's not necessarily us, that's the way it's wrote up. So, um, we would take whatever we could if we could, so we're, we're doing, we're doing the best that we can.
Okay, good report. Uh, we've got a few things to go, we've spent a, a busy month. We've, uh, been, um, meeting, uh, we've had several meetings with the railroad. Uh, I've had a lot of complaints, some of you that don't live across the railroad don't realize, uh, a lot of crossings have been out, industrial parks have been out. And, um, they, they're doing the best they can as far as coming through, but that's just the beginning of it. By September is when the main rail crew will come through, we talked about our last meeting. And, um, they're predicting some of the crossings will be down up to three to four days. Uh, we, um, have met with them, I've got some meetings next week when try to, to actually verify which crossings that, uh, and try to actually explain to them, the ones that are dead-end crossings, they just can't happen, you know, we can't do that because we can't get in fire trucks. And also, I'm working on it and I feel good about it, I've got really some good contacts now with them, with Southern, or Norfolk Southern. And also the, uh, you know, every month, well, every day just about, we get more and more complaints about our line workers in here working, they're going, they're here and they're going to be here. And, you know, when you call me, I do, I, I call their superintendent, I've got, uh, as far as traffic control, but it's just a temporary thing. Once we're out of here, this won't happen in our lifetime again. They're replacing ninety percent of the poles in our county, uh, you know, and so just, just try to bear with them. I mean, now, I mean, if you, there's been a couple of calls that we've really actually had an issue. I mean, uh, they were really out of line and we took, we took care of that, we handled it. Uh, so just, just kind of bear with them. Uh, I want, I want to say this too, um, this is a minor thing to most people, but to people that are running for office today, uh, I've talked to the state and also, of course, Billy, but, you know, your signs you're putting out is great, you put them out there. Try to get them off the right of way if you can, because our mowers have started mowing. And, uh, and what we do, we try to pick them up, we pull them up and put them, uh, and store them at the, at the garage down here, Billy's office set. And so if you have them pull up, go down there and see, but sometimes we can't, they get tore. Now, the state, I'm not sure what they're going to do this year, but they, they have said they're going, they're going to be pulling up signs, uh, if they're on the right of way. So try to get them on the private property if you can, or, or where, you know, whether or not mowing, maybe on a tree or something, but, uh, they're a little bit different. It was the last election, they're trying to, because there was a couple of, uh, the state, one of the state and then one of our tractors had, had run one of the, the big tires, it ripped it wide open, caught the wire. So anyway, be, beware. And Robert, you didn't mention, I was going to mention about you going, uh, Robert spent some time with our governor this, uh, two weeks ago. A week before last, he and Billy. Uh, they went down with me, uh, had a, a state GFA meeting, and it was a long meeting, longer than normal, and they can't, got to visit with our governor, talked over, talked over some issues with him, uh, some road issues we're having, and, and I had a, I think it was a good visit, positive.
It was, yeah.
And, um, so that was, and, and of course legislation was on too, so you got, uh, you got your, your ten cents for us then, I guess you said, you know. Yeah, yeah. And, uh, that was a good trip, a good positive trip. The depot, real quick, uh, we, uh, the electrical's practically finished in it. Uh, we've got all the lighting outside, especially, I went by the other night and I, I didn't know that they'd had it, and it really looks more like it used to when I was growing up, as far as being lit up and all. Inside, uh, framework is about ninety percent. Uh, so they're coming right along with it. So, I hope by this time next week, we can really, I mean, next month, uh, we can actually be, uh, have a paint on the outside and sheet rock and all that. So, uh, it's getting closer and closer. And of course, like I said, like we said before, the, um, our Indian Defense Attorney will be moving down there. And also our soil, our ASC person, which works for the farmers, does soil tests, his office in and out, he will be down there, which is a federal office. So, we'll have, have those two down there. Uh, let me see here, okay. On the election building, we should have had, I think they got the, uh, we've been waiting on a, uh, uh, the survey to go back in and put a benchmark there where we can get the grade on it. But if this weather is gone by next week, you will see a lot of activity down there. We're going to start this pad that we're building for it. And then by this, by the time it's built, we'll have our, uh, our ground print, our prints for the concrete layout and everything, we'll be pouring concrete. So, we're, we're moving right along with it. Even before we do get it finished though, I, I, I will say this, by even November, there's a lot of time involved in actually accepting it through the state and also, no, the November election pop probably won't be healthy in that building. I mean, I don't, you know, the building will be up and it'll probably look like it's totally finished, but there's a lot to it, uh, through the Secretary of State that you go through when you actually move a precinct, so. Uh, but, but it's coming along and it's, it's a positive thing, you know. Um, let me see if there's anything else. Anything y'all want to add?
Uh, that, that bridge collapsed.
You want it?
That bridge, that collapsed.
That's right, down on your end there. Yeah, we had a, we did have a, uh, a person that had called in and put a picture on it. We had no idea that there was a hole came in, a, a little, was it actually a box cover? But it's a semi-bridge box cover down in, uh, there in New England, probably the church there. And we've got that torn out. Um, we did pour the bottom, uh, uh, in it, uh, three, two days ago before it started raining. Got all the steel in it, but we're ready to go back and hopefully we'll have that thing up and have that road back open in probably a week to ten days. Uh, just, uh, actually would have been, we'd been way ahead if this rain hadn't hit, you know. So, um, I don't know, some of y'all that don't travel, we don't realize, but they, they've got a way out, but they, they're people, that's the way that everybody was used to using, so it's really missed, you know. But it'd been in there since the thirties, uh, evidently, you know, the, from the looks of it, the concrete. So, anything else you, I'm forgetting? Okay.
I got.
Go ahead.
You bet down on it.
Oh, yeah, I've, I've got.
I got one other thing I want to add right before, when we get to doing the stuff, is from December to January, if you, I look at numbers and hotel motel tax is something that I'll keep an eye on, and from December to January, it went up sixty-seven thousand dollars. So that shows how many people come through this county staying at one. We don't have a hotel in the county, we've got Airbnbs. So that's, you can see the volume of people that come through, and then from January to February, it just went up. We were a little slow there, so we only had thirty-one thousand in, in increase on them, on their months. But in two months, you're almost at a hundred thousand dollars in hotel motel tax. So that, that gives an idea of what kind of a flow of traffic comes through for people that's visiting this town.
And that's not Ken and Don, the, uh, they're exempt from the parks. Um, we don't, we don't get any of that. A lot of people think, "Well, that's why," but that's all exempt because that's state property. I can't, I mean, I can't even imagine what it would be with all the things they've got out there in New York if we actually could collect that off that. But that's just the, uh, the small, the motel we have here and then all the other stuff. So that's, 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 that's big, I mean, yeah. Anything, Robert, you want to add? Okay, if not, we'll move on here with the business. Ms. Sandy White, you want to come up? Give us a report on the chamber or the Alliance for Dade?
Yes, sir. Good evening. I'm sorry, Sandy. It's okay.
I thought she was waiting on the grayhound bus there for me. I don't have a stop anymore here. Excuse me, I meant.
I need to just go ahead and talk.
It's hard to find good tech people, you know, and I tell you what.
There we go. All right, yeah, go ahead and flip. These are the, um, upcoming seminars this month, um, for the Small Business Development Center. Um, these webinars are available. Um, you can go to our website and, um, it's in our newsletter letter. Um, also, for those, um, that are listening or, or watching tonight, the, uh, you can click there, um, at the click here button and, um, and get to those webinars. But those are usually. to those webinars. But those are usually free or very low cost, um, and we have updates every month. Next. Um, our social media numbers, um, are up to, um, the last thirty days on Facebook, um, is seventeen thousand. Uh, we're slowly growing, uh, in followers, and Instagram is coming up as well. Um, we also are doing some on Twitter. Um, that's coming a little bit slower. Um, we just had some training in, um, a conference that we were just at, and then Patricia is at another conference right now, um, that she's looking to learn more on social media. So hopefully you'll see more updates, um, and more, um, reaches, uh, in the future. Uh, numbers for February for the Welcome Center, um, forty-seven, um, residents came into Welcome Center, uh, fifty-two visitors and thirty calls. And we do have visitors from all over that come. Uh, we've had a lot of Canadians lately that have been coming through. And, um, and of course, we always get, uh, a lot of visitors with the, um, Lyman School when they, um, start their classes. Um, we do have another selfie station up, um, at the, um, gazebo, um, for St. Patrick's Day. Uh, since Easter is coming, um, we will take this one down right after, um, St. Patrick's Day and put another one up for Easter. Um, we had, uh, for Valentine's, we had, um, uh, of the, it's a middle school dance. Um, so we had them taking pictures there. So, um, this has been well-received, uh, and, um, we hope people are enjoying it. Uh, just to let you know, um, we've got a business expanding. Um, the Rosie Mae's Alpaca Farm, their coffee shop is now open for breakfast. So, um, we always like it when, uh, business, um, expands. And, uh, another business, Dire Livestock Beef, is now in the semifinals for the IDR Leap, um, that is the, um, credit union, um, Federal Credit Union, uh, Tennessee Valley that, um, puts on that contest every year. So we, we wish them well. And then, um, with Cloudlin, with, um, Macklemore, a couple of things. Um, they are, they were, um, featured in Forbes, um, as one of the top five golf resorts, uh, destinations that are opening a new course this year. And so that was nice recognition for them, um, as well as, um, they did have a soft opening in February for, um, the new hotel. Uh, it's a Curio, it's the one hundred and sixty-second Curio Collection Hotel by Hilton. So, um, those are premier hotels around the world. And, um, so we have one right in our back door. Um, even though the hotel itself is in Walker County, we definitely will see a lot of, uh, um, a lot of, um, visitation into the county. And so we're looking forward to that. And, um, we are in very close contact with them, um, and supplying, and then with visitor guides, and, um, and making sure that they know what's here in, in Dade County to do. Also, too, um, some congratulations, um, again, to, to Tank for his new position, as well as, um, we have, um, Jacob Barger, who is the, um, our star student this year, and then his star teacher was Cynthia Bowden. Uh, there's a parent information night coming up on the twelfth at the high school. Um, also, um, for any employers, uh, Career Day is coming up at the high school on April seventeenth. Uh, you can register now. It's free registration, but you do have to register. Um, you can go to our website, allianceforday.com, and register. Uh, some things coming up. There are actually three activities coming up at the, um, State Park, uh, World Planting Day, and Bob, uh, Bog Garden Ded- um, Dedication on the twenty-first. On the sixteenth is a fossil search at Durham Mans, and then also the egg hunt on the twenty-third. Also on the twenty-third is the Lions Club Run and Walk. It's on Cloverdale Road. And, um, then Easter, two other Easter events. Uh, twenty-seventh is the Methodist Church Easter Extravaganza, and then also at the, uh, Sports Complex, the, uh, Rising Fawn Church of God is doing another one on the thirtieth. Uh, the twenty-ninth is the interpretive wildflower hike at Lula Lake. And then, um, on the thirtieth is the Dade Middle School Baseball First Annual Golf Tournament. Uh, there's a pancake breakfast coming up, uh, with the Dade County Fire Department on, um, April thirteenth. And then also the, uh, Hand Up Ministry Gala Celebration of Hope is coming up on the twentieth. You can buy tickets now, um, and they're also looking for sponsors. That's, that's my report.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Good report.
Lot going on.
Lot, lot happening.
Lots going on.
Yep, good. All right. Let's see, we got two, uh, reports, uh, one from, uh, Laura Beth Cunningham, and also, uh, with the 4HAD, and also one with Mindy, uh, Hayworth, and they are, um, a presentation online. So you can go online there on the website if you want to view those. All right, move down to number five, five A. Uh, Don, you want to go over our monthly financial report, please?
Okay. As of February twenty-ninth, uh, the general fund had a balance of two million five hundred and sixty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. We have one point five million on hand and, uh, certificate of deposits. Uh, federal asset fund, US Treasury, a balance of zero. Share special fund, balance of two thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars. Drug abuse education fund, eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars. Supplemental juvenile services fund, twenty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars. Victim assistance fund, one thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars. Jail fund, thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars. Federal asset fund, Department of Justice, zero. American Rescue Plan, nine hundred and sixty-three thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars. Accommodations tax, two hundred and eighty-three thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars. Employee flexible spending account, twenty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars. Payroll account, seventy thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars. Two thousand fifteen SPOST projects, projects account, we have ninety-three thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars. And then, uh, okay, two thousand twenty-one, this projects account, SPOST, ninety-two thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And then this SPOST proceeds account, two million six hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars. Next report we have is for Jan-, as of January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, actuals for the month, uh, for revenues came in at eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand six oh six. We budgeted eight hundred and twenty-five thousand two fifty, so we were excess budget of two million, uh, two, I'm sorry, two thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars. Uh, for year-to-date, revenues were ten million three hundred and five thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars. We'd budgeted ten million two hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So again, in excess of thirty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars. Expense-wise for the month of January, we expensed one million seventy-one thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. We budgeted one million one oh seven eight fifteen. So we were under budget by thirty-six thousand and four dollars. Year-to-date, eight million, we expensed eight million three hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. We had budgeted eight million seven hundred and eighty-two thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars. So again, under budget by four hundred and thirty-five thousand four six, four seventeen. Budget attained so far through this period should be at fifty-eight point three-three percent. Revenues attained were at seventy point one eight percent, and expenses attained were at fifty-six point eight four percent. Looking at local option sales tax for the month of February, we brought in two hundred and forty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars and nine cents. And for SPOST, Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, we brought in three hundred and five thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. You see, the next report is the, uh, two thousand twenty-one SPOST tracking, and then following that is the two thousand fifteen SPOST tracking worksheet. And then the final report is from the Tax Commissioner's Office for period July first, two thousand twenty-three through January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. She's collected five million two hundred and thirty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars of budgeted six point three million. So she's right at eighty-two point six four percent for the year. That concludes the report.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Townsend?
Yes, sir.
I'll entertain a motion to, to approve our financial report as presented. They have a motion?
Motion to approve is read.
All right, thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Okay, call a vote. Mr. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
And Sheriff votes yes. Motion carries.
Uh, this is a regular scheduled meeting of the Dade County Board of Commissioners, which takes place at the same time on the first Thursday if ever made proper notice. Here I go again, going backwards. The reading of our minutes of last ma-, uh, of our last meeting, um, or any special call meeting will not be required, since all commissioners have been furnished copies in advance. Minutes are public record and are posted, uh, in the hallway in our county commission office. Uh, the minutes are including the consent agenda. This time, Mr. Townsend, would you go over a consent agenda, and we will entertain a motion to concerning that, please?
All right, we have the approval of the agenda as amended by item number nine and item number ten. Uh, we have approval of the previous meeting minutes, the, uh, review and personnel status report, approval of resolution R dash zero nine dash twenty-four, appointment of Pam Wheeler to Lookout Mountain Community Services Board to be business as Bridge Health Board. That's a three-year term commencing July first, two thousand twenty-four, expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. We have proclamation for Intellectual Development Disabilities Awareness Month, proclamation for the Lions Club Savior Vision Month for March, proclamation for Social Workers Month, proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. We have the, uh, under SPOST, Dade County Mountain Rescue for the purchase of communication devices and emergency scene lot, as presented by Assistant Chief Reed Gross. We have a historic preserve, I'm sorry, Historic Courthouse Restoration Project Report, as presented by Mr. Cole Atkins of BCM Incorporated. Resolution R dash ten dash twenty-four, disposal of surplus county property, nineteen eighty-five Chevrolet truck with a pro-, uh, with three hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-three miles. An agreement with IDEMIA, uh, which is, uh, Edema Identity and Security USA LLC Service Agreement for Biometric Identification for Permitting Through the Probate Court, and amendment to the Alcohol Beverage Control Ordinance as recommended by the ABC Board. That is for first reading only for the, uh, golf course licensing, first reading only for distance requirements, and first reading, uh, for the correction of brown bagging. That concludes the consent agenda.
Okay. Any questions or corrections only? Consent agenda. If not, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to approve the consent agenda as presented. They have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you. They have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Call a vote. Mr. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
And Sheriff votes yes. Motion carries. Robert, have you got anything that I just kind of skipped over, you know what I mean?
No, I don't, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, okay. All right, uh, you want to add anything you want?
I do, I want to add one more thing. I forgot about this earlier. We have been working, Stacy and them have been working on the senior citizens building. They've redone the floors in the bathrooms. Um, they, the floors, the stalls, the old sinks, they put all that new in, and in the kitchen, they put new countertops and stuff on, and new stainless on the wall. So I'm thinking they will be done probably tomorrow, because they've got that building rented out Saturday. But they have redone that, that stuff at the senior building as well.
As well, over there, because they've been there, most of it's been there since the building was built, all these years.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. If there's not any further, I'll entertain a motion to, Jarn, they have a motion?
Make a motion, Jarn.
Have a second?
Second.
They don't call a vote. So, Lowry?
Yes.
Hartline?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
And Sheriff votes yes. Thanks, all of you for being here. Come back next Thursday, uh, well, not next Thursday, but our next meeting.
Yeah, come back next Thursday.
And, uh, we appreciate all of, all of you coming, but also appreciate how y'all are running for office and stepping up like.